Number nine, we have two pretty important deputations and presentations on issues that are current. So I'm starting off at nine A, which is Anne Marie Shaw and Debbie Frye and Sue Seifert. Welcome. Is it working? There we go.
Good evening. Good evening, councilors, Mayor Boddy, and staff. I wanted to start off today just giving you a brief overview of some of the homelessness services that are provided by the county and various other agencies within Gray County. First of all, just starting off with a brief overview of Gray County housing. Gray County housing has eight hundred and eighty-eight units of housing that is rent geared to income. Five hundred of those are located in Owen Sound. We also support ten nonprofits. Those nonprofits provide another four hundred and, or five hundred and twenty-four units of housing throughout Gray County. We are responsible for the provincial program of the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative and also the investment in affordable housing programs. So throughout the presentation, I'll give you a little bit more of an overview on the homelessness prevention program. The investment in affordable housing program has various programs such as the homeownership, which is a five percent down payment for someone who was looking to buy a home, a rent supplement program, which is two hundred dollars or up to two hundred dollars in rent money that would go directly to the landlord in order to assist in making the unit more affordable. We have Ontario Renovates that looks at small renos, well, large renos too, I guess, as a roof or a furnace that will allow somebody to stay in their home longer, and secondary suites and rental builds, and that's looking at providing more affordable housing. Over the last couple of years, we have thirty-four units that are being built in Owen Sound, and we have a request for proposal that is going out next week to build some new affordable units in Durham also. The county has a ten-year housing and homelessness plan. As of 2014, the Housing Services Act mandated that all service managers, Gray County is a service manager, and all service managers in the province had to have a homelessness plan. 2013, we did consultation with people with lived experience with homelessness, with community agencies, and some of our own tenants in the public. We identified four areas to sustain and create affordable housing: homelessness prevention, transitional housing, and service coordination. I have handed a handout to you with, does have an update on our 2017 report from last year, just giving you basically a summary of some of the services that were provided. And we're also going out for review this fall, as we'll be going into our fifth year next year. We're looking at consultation on how we're doing, what we're doing, and what needs to be changed. We know that affordable housing is an issue in Gray County and right across the province. Higher utility rates, higher rent, and a lower vacancy does make it for challenging to find affordable housing in Gray County. So we know that we've got some things we need to work on, and we want some direction from everybody else. We're certainly, you know, do have a system in place right now, but we know that there's always room for improvement. Under our homelessness prevention program, we have a number of initiatives. We have domiciliary hostels in which we support, Y Emergency Housing Program and Prevention, Safe &amp; Sound, Sustainable Housing Benefit, and the Community Enhancement Program. Domiciliary hostels, we provided last year in 2017, six hundred thousand dollars. There are five domiciliary hostels within Gray County, three in Owen Sound, and they provide beds to people that may need a little bit of assistance in maintaining and sustaining their housing. There are a hundred and twenty-five beds in Gray County. Ninety-two of those beds are funded by Gray County itself, and the remaining are funded by Hope Gray Bruce. There are eleven beds currently available right now in Gray County for those support services. Some of the services that residents might have would be medication management, laundry services, assistance with daily activities, nutritious meals and snacks, and assistance with transportation and appointments. Gray County is involved with those five providers and also do look at the various things that need to be done in order to maintain their services. So we would look at insurance, fire, health and safety, capital, funding, staffing, making sure that staffing have the correct qualifications and that they're the amount, correct amount of staff on site. Emergency housing, Gray County does fund the Y to provide emergency housing program and a homelessness prevention program, and Sue Seifert is here from the Y, so she'll provide some information and details on those programs. We also assist Safe &amp; Sound. It has, it's a storefront for meals and laundry and supplies. There is some transitional housing available there, and they also provide after-hours emergency services. So for instance, when the Y is not open, then there is a contact line for someone after hours if they do need assistance with emergency housing. There's the Sustainable Housing Benefit. So the Sustainable Housing Benefit is a fund that we provide to residents of Gray County in which may help them sustain or maintain their housing. For instance, they may have fallen behind in utility arrears. Utility costs have been going up over the last few years, so sometimes not easy to maintain on a lower income. There might be some rental arrears or last month's rent, especially if they're looking for something that's a little bit more sustainable or affordable. This will allow them to have that sort of heads up because at first end, last month's rent or do it at the same time. So that's often very difficult for someone to come up with. So that is available through Gray County. Last year, we assisted seven hundred and thirteen households in, at a cost of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We also have a Community Enhancement Program, and these funds are built to assist community organizations to provide services. So we're looking at those grassroots organizations, those that are in our community, maybe your Beaver Valley Outreach, or looking at maybe O-Share. So these are examples of communities that may provide assistance with meals, hot meal, transportation, clothing, or other programs. And so these are just small grants in which we provide on an annual basis for those that apply, so that there are more services out there and more services that people are able to access. So that's it for my portion. Now we're on to the Y. Sue Seifert.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am the manager of Community and Employment Services for the YMCA of Owen Sound, Gray Bruce, and I'm here tonight to talk specifically about our housing program and specifically services to individuals who are homeless and requiring emergency shelter. So the YMCA, we meet one-on-one with individuals to help find affordable, appropriate, and accessible long-term housing. We meet or work with youth who are sixteen-plus as well as with adults. And we also work with countless organizations and services across the area to assist with support for health, finances, and well-being that enable the individual to be able to retain housing once it's found. So how do we do that? We start out by assessing the vulnerability of the individual. So if, for example, they are found themselves homeless because they're a victim of domestic abuse, then we would connect with the women's shelter. Perhaps they've been released from hospital, in which case, what services are available? Perhaps VON? Is there a need in that case for accessible housing because of a wheelchair or a walker, that kind of thing? We also look at what the situation is. Does the individual have any available funds? Do they have connections, family or friends perhaps, with whom they could stay? Sometimes, if we're able to provide them with a gift card for a local grocery store, that might help a family or friend be willing to put them up on a short-term basis because they can help with groceries while they stay with them. We also look at, is this their home community? If it's not their home community, then is there a community elsewhere where perhaps they have some supports? Is there a parent, a grandparent, an aunt or an uncle who would be able to help them or provide them with some support, an ongoing support? Sometimes in that case, we will help by providing a taxi to take them to the other community, or perhaps we can provide a gas card, which will allow the individual to come to Owen Sound to pick them up. Every situation, every story is different, and our job is to determine what works for that individual at this time. So once we've explored other options, and if they are not available, then we will arrange for the individual to stay at a local hotel or a bed and breakfast as a short-term plan. We also work with Safe &amp; Sound, which is a nonprofit organization who is staffed by volunteers. They answer the phone from four-thirty until ten, seven days a week, and they also can arrange to put somebody up at a bed and breakfast or a hotel, and they instruct the individual to come and contact us on the next business day. So once temporary shelter is arranged, then our focus becomes to work on more secure housing. Our aim is to help individuals move from homelessness with a housing plan within five days, but five days is a benchmark. We do that because, so that the individual knows that emergency shelter is intended as a short-term option while a longer-term solution is being worked on. Knowing that emergency shelter is time limited does encourage them to keep moving forward and to be part of the plan. While they're sheltered, our staff will set regular, daily, sometimes more than daily, appointments to work together, and the individual will be asked to do their part. They may be given tasks to do to help us to find housing. Those things might be talking to a friend to see if they know of an available unit. Maybe there's somebody who's looking for a roommate. Check the newspapers to see what's available. Perhaps they need to talk to their Ontario Works caseworker to determine what resources are, excuse me, are available there, setting a budget or working on a budget so that they know what they can afford. As I mentioned, five days is a benchmark. It is not a rule. If someone's working or following through and working on their housing plan, but the situation may be as complex, or if they're particularly vulnerable, then we can extend the stay. That often happens if the person needs specialized housing, for example, if it needs to be accessible. Perhaps they're waiting on a unit that they've secured, so maybe they're, they can move into their place on the first of the next month, but that's ten days away. We can continue to house them. Maybe they're working with another organization and are working on some goals. Maybe they're a victim of human trafficking or family violence, and perhaps they're waiting for a paycheck or other finances. Those are situations when we would look at housing them for longer than five days. While we work out a plan, we do provide space and access to telephones so that they can contact landlords. In some cases, we will actually contact landlords on their behalf. In almost every case, we do help them to apply to county housing so that they can get on the waiting list. And sometimes individuals are not bound to Owen Sound, and they're willing to go anywhere else or anywhere, in which case county housing may be available much more quickly in some of the outlying communities. In other cases, that's not an option because the individual requires the services that are only available in Owen Sound, perhaps public transportation, medical treatment, that kind of thing. Sometimes, because of a reputation of poor tenant history, finding housing for an individual is a challenge. Sometimes we can come up with one or maybe two options for the individual. Neither one of those options are maybe their preference, however, they might have to take one of those options on the short term. They can continue to explore other options while they have secured housing. As part of the plan, we do connect with other organizations or services as appropriate. That might be mental health, medical, addiction services, any wraparound services to support them and to help them better be able to retain that housing once they found it. Again, every situation, every story is different. In each case, we want the individual to be part of the plan. Challenges we face continually are finding affordable housing, finding units that will house a family, finding accessible units, finding assisted living spaces for individuals with low income, and finding landlords who are willing to give a chance to someone with a poor tenant history, or is on Ontario Works, or a youth, or maybe has pets. So, so far in 2018, did it come up really well? So far in 2018 in Owen Sound, we have provided five hundred and seventy-eight nights of emergency shelter to one hundred and seventy-two people. And those stays have ranged from one night to eighteen-plus. I think we housed one individual for twenty-one nights, but overall, the average number of stays per person is three point three nights. And just as reference, how that compares to the overall county of Gray, in the same time, till now in 2018, nine hundred and twenty-nine nights have been provided to two hundred and seventy-two people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Debbie Frye. I'm from Hope Gray Bruce Mental Health and Addictions. Thank you for inviting us tonight to share our services and supports. Just a brief caveat, as some of you may or may not know, Hope Gray Bruce will be amalgamating with GB House and CMHA. As of September first, the new organization will be called CMHA Gray Bruce with the tagline, "Mental Health and Addictions." Having said that, that won't change any of our services, phone numbers or anything, that will be all the same. So the pamphlets that have been distributed will be current in terms of the services and supports that we receive. So in terms of supportive housing and outreach, we offer supports to those living with a serious mental illness and addictions. Our housing menu includes all kinds of things. We have addiction supportive housing. We have an apartment program and residential program as well. So how do you get to us and how do you get to these housing options? This is a quick example of application referral. We have reduced it so that it's easy to read, it's not cumbersome, and that people who are accessing the services don't find it too overwhelming. Self-referrals are accepted, so somebody coming off the street that doesn't have a place to live can come into our office, Community Connections. There, they can meet with our intake staff. They will go through a little bit more in terms of what they're looking for. Because our mandate is serious mental illness, we do a little bit of work around the background and what that means, and then customize what they would like in terms of their housing options. So we have tools that we use that determine the wants and needs of the individuals that are seeking housing. One of the key components of our housing support is our outreach. And so outreach is offered while people are on the waitlist. We do have a long waitlist, but if somebody is really struggling and needing some case management, we offer that while they're waiting on the list. So there is always that. In addition, we have a group services that for those that are still looking for housing and they have nothing to do during the day, they can certainly participate in the day activities that we offer. We do connect with other community partners such as Gray County and the Y quite frequently, and that seems to be a very stronghold for the outreach sense of work. A lot of the community partnerships and liaising and proper referrals is done in our case management function. Vacancies are filled based on vulnerability and the time on the waitlist. So if you were on the waitlist for a long time and somebody was homeless, they would jump up to the top. We do have priority ranking tools that the intake team are trained on and are used frequently. So types of supportive housing that's offered is we have a short-term housing, which is less than forty-five days. So somebody that might access that might be somebody who's maybe gotten involved in the judicial system and is needing some time to figure out where they want to go. So we do offer that. Again, all of our housing is with support, so that means with staff, outreach staff that are trained in mental health and addictions. Our temporary housing, which is less than three hundred and sixty-four days. Our addiction supportive housing is three hundred and sixty-four days. So those are folks that are struggling with addiction issues and needing some stable, affordable, safe housing to figure out where they need to go and develop their customized plans moving forward. Our long-term housing could be our group homes. Some of the folks there have been there for a while, and again, it would be depending on the need of the people. Our apartment programs, as long as people are in the long-term housing and require that support, they can remain. Many folks decide that at some point, they don't need the support any longer and may move on to getting onto the list of Gray County or move to market rent. Some of the really good stories for some of our folks that have gone into our long-term housing is after a long time of stability, people have been able to secure employment and move forward with getting out of our services and no longer needing our supports and accessing the community on their own. And so as they move on, then we have more room for those that do need that actual support. In terms of our housing spaces, so we have fifty-nine shared living spaces, so that's kind of a conglomerate group, living spaces, a hundred private market apartments. And again, that's not just here in Owen Sound, that's across Gray and Bruce. All of our outreach folks do travel within Gray Bruce from the shoreline to all over the place. They're traveling the highways and byways all the way up to Tobemory and providing that in-house apartment support for folks. I mentioned the addiction supportive housing. That's a relatively new program for us. We do have our addiction supports. We have addiction counselors that work in tandem with outreach. So if somebody is struggling and needing some extra work, they will work with the addiction support worker. Again, the addiction, the outreach people do go into the apartments and make sure that folks are doing okay and that things, the rents are getting paid on time and everything is going well. We have, we do offer a rent subsidy program partnership with Bruce and Gray. Their outreach support, as I mentioned before, is one of the crux of what it is that we offer. We've got an active waiting list, and why I say active is that understanding that there's lots of needs for housing out there, that we try our very, very best to develop customized, really creative ideas around those that are waiting on the list and needing some housing. So again, and we do offer metro cards, food cards, those types of things to help people stay if they're hanging out with their buddies and keep them housed for a little bit. We do offer motel, short stays at motels as well. And for those that are struggling physically or mentally with their health, we do offer cab rides to the hospital and merge departments and those types of things to seek their medical advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilors, have questions? Or is there someone else coming up? I guess I should, I'm jumping to conclusions here. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. And thank you so much for your presentation and lighting all of us on the services that are available. Question I had, I didn't hear anyone mentioning O-Share or Salvation Army Food Bank. Can somebody tell me your connections with those?
So we do provide some funding through our Community Enhancement Grant, and it is a small grant to O-Share. I think that it's, what we do is make referrals. A lot of the funds are done through fundraising and come from other sources other than a county source, but it's certainly something that we support as needed and definitely provide referrals to, for people to use the services. I think all of us provide those. And the Salvation Army. So yeah, the Salvation Army is not funded through the county either. It would be funded through another source. But again, definitely working within the communities with Salvation Army and those referrals.
Others? Do you want? Yeah, good.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie. So what I'm hearing and what I've heard and what I know from being on the county, there's no need for anyone to go homeless, to go without a bed at night.
We try our best, that's for certain. There are services available through emergency services for someone too. The Y does have that availability. So yes, there are options. There are always people that maybe we don't reach, but we certainly, if, you know, try and get the word out that if somebody does need assistance, to contact the Y or contact that after-hours line.
Right. And there are some people that just simply don't want to go somewhere to sleep.
And that's fine, too. If they don't want to, then when they do decide they want to, for instance, if it's getting cold or circumstances change, then we're certainly there to provide that service.
Right. Now also, sitting on the Owen Sound Housing Board, how many people are on the list looking for housing?
For Owen Sound?
For Owen Sound.
We have approximately, probably over about four hundred people that are looking for housing in Owen Sound on our waitlist. I'm always hesitant to give a number just because circumstances change. We know that sometimes we have seniors that might go on the list thinking that they might need it in a few years, and we do have a number of people that come from out of Gray County that are on our waitlist too, but certainly there is a need for affordable housing.
And at this time, the Owen Sound Housing is applying for permission for eight new units.
That's right. Eight new units, and I know have site planned for up to ninety units on there. So again, working with the province and federal governments and waiting to see what some of those new funds might be coming down that we can use to build more affordable housing and looking at other opportunities too. We're also looking at some options with our Westmount family units too.
Well, I think that the county's ten-year housing plan is certainly the step in the right direction, not plan is, and it's a good plan, and I'm quite sure when we're all working together, we can make it happen.
Thank you.
Others? Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I'm sorry, this will be actually through you two, the Director of Community Services. Sorry, thank you. Pam, I'm, I-
I'll have one before you leave, Anne Marie, just if you want to hold on. Go ahead.
Pam, I apologize for putting you on the spot here because I didn't give you a heads-up, but the CIP plan, we have our Community Improvement Plan, and in that, do we not address affordable housing options as well that could be for a developer who is planning to build affordable housing?
Through you, your worship. There is an affordable housing loan program in our CIP. It isn't one that the city has funded traditionally because you've chosen to support this type of housing in other ways, through the county, through Owen Sound Municipal Nonprofit and other means.
Thank you.
So we were all at the AMO conference last weekend, and there's one session that everybody's in the room, and there's dozens of cabinet ministers. Questions came up about mental health, questions came up about homelessness, questions came up about opiates, and it was clear that all of those are very much on the provincial government's radar, but they're six weeks old, so who knows where they're going. Do you have any feeling or any idea of indication of what funding is available, is going to be available, that we can access up here for affordable housing and some of those other issues?
So we have traditionally been working with the province through the Investment and Affordable Housing Program. We have funds up until next year for that program, and those right now are being tied to the Request for Proposal for the Durham property that I had mentioned earlier. We're hoping that they will continue on the same path of providing affordable housing funds. It's very hard with a smaller tax base to provide a large supply of affordable housing, so the need for the province and the federal government, it has to be there. If the system doesn't work, if there isn't commitment from all three levels of government. We were very happy just to, in the last year, that there's been a National Housing Strategy announced too. There is some co-investment funds available. We are looking into that. It's more looking at loans rather than grants for building housing, but there might be some options there for some local private builders that might be interested in, you know, even if they're building, you know, fifty units and they want to make two affordable. It's a great way to start that conversation about affordable housing. We are hoping by this fall to, after the one-hundred-day review, to maybe have some more answers from the present provincial government.
Great, thank you. That lead to any other questions? Anyone? No. So I want to thank all three of you, and I see Kim Wingrove back there, and everyone, Francesca, everyone that's come to present to us tonight, give us that information. How often staff know about that information, and it kind of slips through our filter and we get asked questions, and we don't know the answer quickly enough. So it's great to have you present to us tonight and being on Rogers Cable that the citizens get to hear it and understand it. And so thank you very much for your presentation.